Glad you. Forum. An interesting time, I'm gonna. Call the meeting to order at seven oh four. P M, May sixth. Two thousand and twenty-four. So first, uh, roll call, um, the president, Chair Lip Maruziak. Uh, Vice Chair Tesman.
Present.
Commissioner Alef. Commissioner Kilcup. Commissioner Crone.
Present.
Commissioner Lambert.
Present.
And Commissioner Smith. Okay. So we barely have a quorum here, right? One, two, three, yeah. So I'm gonna ahead and proceed. Uh, first, uh, a move that we. Uh, amend the agenda. To add an agenda item after the minutes. Uh, for a River Trail and Splash Pad update by the staff. Can I get a second?
Second. Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Okay. Requested we approve the agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
All approved?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Can't do that twice, but that's on me. Alright, uh, Council Liaison Report.
Greetings, Commission. Uh, we did, this is a, uh, this last week was a fifth Monday of the month, so we didn't have a council meeting in between. Uh, but I'll, uh, update you on just a few things. Uh, we did celebrate the grand opening officially of the Centennial Park All-Inclusive Playground. Uh, which due to its green color apparently attracted a lot of bees with all the pollen. But apparently, uh, that seems to be a waning issue, correct? Yes? Okay, it looks like, uh, the bees ate up all the pollen, so they, uh, they're leaving it alone now. Uh. The open and running, and it is a, a true regional asset. My, uh. Father was visiting, uh, this last week and was able. And a lot of the equipment, uh, with the kids that, um, with his grandkids that he wouldn't have otherwise been able to, uh, experience. Been to a lot of the play equipment with them, and, uh, that was very special for him. Um, so that's kind of a personal connection for me. I'm pretty, pretty excited about the whole thing. Uh, it's also recently honored with, uh, its tenth consecutive year of being a Tree City USA, uh. And, uh, in accompanying growth. Uh, and the city achieved sterling status. We also celebrated related to that, the Arbor Day event on April twenty-seventh with tree planting and kids activities. Uh, regarding the, um, Tree City USA and Sterling Community Status. Uh, at the April twenty-second City Council Meeting, the Washington, this is quite a title. The Washington State Department of Natural Resources Evergreen Communities Coordinator. Uh, Julia Cass said, "We look at your community as leaders in urban forestry within our state. And in our country, uh, know that you, meaning Snoqualmie, are being watched, uh, you're being followed and in a good way, being followed. Uh, and you're being used as an example. I hope to see you continue as leaders in urban forestry in the coming years and far into the future." Uh, there are four criteria that have to be met, uh, maintaining a tree board or department, having a community tree ordinance. Uh, spending at least two dollars per capita on urban forestry and celebrating Arbor Day. Uh, and a huge round of applause goes to, uh, Phil Bennett, uh, our city arborist, uh, for. Uh. Uh. For helping us maintain that status. And, uh, the other thing is that the city. Is reviewing an option to enact a traffic impact fee for. Developments, uh, we have not actually done that, just, uh, the city council said, "Yes, uh, city administration, we like the idea in general, come to us with a plan." And, uh, check with, um. Like, development director, that's gonna come to it. Uh, when prepared by the, um. City Administration will come to planning commission first before council, is that right? Traffic impact fees. Yeah. It does not go to planning commission, okay? Okay, uh, but, uh, almost every, uh, city in the area has, uh, traffic impact fees, and, uh, those around us are the highest in the state. Uh, traffic impact fees reduce uncertainty for developers in terms of the cost of development. Uh, the way we've done it in the past is saying, "Hey, if you want to develop here, why don't you agree to these terms for helping us pay for development?" Uh, with regard to traffic, and, uh, that's just, uh, a lot of uncertainty for developers, so this'll just make things a little bit more streamlined. Um, so that's my update, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, I'm gonna go in reverse order just to, uh, give other folks, uh, some, uh. Uh, some time, um, rather than, uh, Vice Chair Tesman, uh, hogging all the hog, uh, stuff. At any rate, uh, do you want to note that, uh, Commissioner Smith, you're present? And. And Commissioner Kilkup also present. Okay, did we get any? Um, email from Commissioner Alef? Okay, do we, uh? Alright, so let, let's, before we move on to, let me move that, uh. We excuse Commissioner Alef, because usually he's been good at notifying us this time, and, um, if it does again, then we won't excuse him. Can I get a second? For his absence?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, now, Commissioner Smith, any questions for? Our council member?
I don't, I, I caught that part way through, but, uh, no, the, the part on the impact fees, uh, that's great, I didn't have any other questions, though.
Okay.
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Crone?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Commissioner Kilkup?
Nope, I think that's a great plan.
Okay, Commissioner Tesman?
Uh, for, for Councilmember Johnson or staff, uh, I'm not sure, uh, who has the answer, but just curious, how much do we spend per capita? For urban forestry? We obviously meet the two, two dollars per capita, but. Just curious if we exceed that? And if you don't have it offhand, you know, that's fine, we can do it in another session.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, I don't have the budget right in front of me at the moment, but, uh, yeah, there, there's a line in there for that, uh, for urban forestry. Um. And, uh, staff can probably look it up as well at some point. Yeah.
Just curious, thank you.
Okay, any? Uh, Snoqualmie Ice Cream update?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
My staff wants to take that.
Uh, are you talking just about Snoqualmie Ice Cream, or?
Yeah, the, the fire.
Yeah, so the, there was a, a King County Fire Inspection Report produced. Um, and the owner of the building, it will be. Coming to the city very quickly or soon with a demolition permit. And Snoqualmie Ice Cream and a few other businesses have been able to find other places to occupy along Railroad and Falls Avenue. To conduct their businesses while the other building is being rebuilt.
Okay, so they do plan to rebuild in, uh, our historic style?
Yeah, there's no doubt that they will rebuild the building, um, it'll be a. Um, you know, and it'll be new, uh. Businesses, it seemed to be very successful in finding opening, open spaces along the railroad avenue, Falls Avenue.
Okay. Alright, and.
I'm asking a question. I'm asking a question, yeah. At the chair, um. So that is obviously well within the historic, uh, district, um, are they required to keep the facade the way it was? Is that historic facade, or is it gonna be a brand new building that looks different? And that question goes to both sides of the building, uh, Fall Side and the.
I'm not privy to any changes that they might be proposing, it sounded like from talking to the. Building owner that they would be building the building exactly the same way that it was. But they haven't provided any new, you know, building permits or anything like that, they're just at the demo permit stage.
That's the solid, the fall side, you guys.
Yeah, well, I could pass that along to her, you know, and then it would likely go to Planning Commission.
Okay, good, good. I, I did have, yeah, one other question. You know, I believe we have a contact with the Washington State Fish and Wildlife Department. And, uh, because they definitely had input to our comprehensive plan that we considered, um, and I wanted to know if we could. Now, for reintroducing grizzly bears in the Cascades. Because, um, I think there's a lot of. You know, folks in cities in King County that think it's a good idea, but I know there's a lot of concern. Um, so just curious.
Uh, if it's part of the historic range, then. Grizzly bears would probably feel the same way about us.
Um, okay, is, is there any way to get their? The fishing game, uh, rationale for that a little bit more?
Sure, I, I can reach out to our contact or our local representative at the state. Fish and Wildlife. And get some more information.
Yeah, I think, uh. Uh, I think it's worth asking a couple of questions about it, yeah.
Yeah, we could bring that back for. Planning Commission items of interest.
Okay.
Especially.
Yeah, that's, that's really where I should have brought it up, yeah.
Especially if it wasn't part of their historic range, then I'd also be pretty curious, if it is, then. That's probably a good reason.
What do they feed on elk? Uh, at any rate, no, I'll bring it up, uh, special twist, okay? Um, definitely do a little bit of rat, okay? Um, I. Moving on to the next agenda item, approval of minutes stated. Oh, thank you, sir. Uh, moving on to next agenda item, approval of minutes stated April fifteenth. Uh, twenty twenty-four. Um, can I get a motion to approve minutes as written?
I get it.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Those are approved, and now we have our new agenda item of a River Trail and Splash Pad update. Alright, thank you, Councilmember Johnson, didn't mean to move on too fast.
Alright. Good evening, uh, good evening, uh, Planning Commission, my name is Dylan Gamble, I am. Now at the Parks, Public Works Department, but. I'm no major to the Plan Commission, it's been a little while now, a couple year and a half or two years. And, uh, yeah, I'm happy to be here and answer some questions about the River Trail and the Splash Pad, um. Wait a second. Is that, uh, I hope that's better. Andy, this is on, right? Yeah. Okay, so, um, I just wanted to maybe pause for a second and see if there's a way you'd like me to go about this. Uh, I can kind of give broad overview and update of where we stand, or I can kind of do a question and answer it, I don't really know the. The questions that were bound before this meeting, so I just want to leave.
So, so first on the Splash Pad, uh, I understand it's, it's started, uh, what is the, uh, what's the timeline and milestones?
Yes, so the Splash Pad is a design build project for us, which means that we don't have to go back once we've gotten designs and get a separate. Uh, construction bid, so the, the kind of pivot between, we've designed this Splash Pad idea and we're going to construction is very fast, and that's what we're experiencing right now. We just started the construction aspect of it, they're in the demo phase, and we're kind of in that identifying the reality check of plans versus what is actually in the ground and where it's located. And the constraints of the site, and so that's what we've been working on right now. Uh, the anticipated timeline hasn't changed, we're still looking to open it by, uh, July first, I believe. Uh, which is.
Next question, yeah, very good. So it'll be opened by the heat of summer, that's great.
That is the plan.
Okay, do, um, any of the commissioners have any other question on the splash? Okay, seeing none, move on to River Trail, I mean, I, I think you were called. Ago, we had, uh. Talks about the phases of that, and I just want to know what's, what's the current plan?
Yeah, yeah, so. I kind of want to give a little bit of breakdown in this for, uh, commissioners who weren't here as long and don't have the kind of background on this project. But, uh, general terms, it used to be called River Walk, through some efforts and coordination with Snoqualmie Tribes, well, it was our administration, we've chosen to pivot the name. Uh, to kind of. Maintain that professionalism and coordination with our, uh, local tribe, and so we're now calling the project overall that used to be called River Walk, River Trail. It's a bit of a nomenclature change. Uh, it hasn't changed the overall intent of the project, rather, it has kind of captured all the discussions and negotiations that have been ongoing from the twenty twenty, or twenty fifteen. Adoption of that master plan to now, so we've been working with them about every phase and every bit of this project, and. Uh, as we've done that, we've kind of come up with a bit of a. Implementation plan of our master plan, so that is kind of what's reflected in the new concept of that River Trail, so. That is one thing, and the next bit is that the project is, uh, quite a big scale of a concept, if you think about a river walk that goes from Meadow Brook Bridge all the way to the two oh two bridge, so. What we see is a phased approach where we kind of attack the segments that we have ownership, access, and capacity to develop. So what we have been working on right now is what was historically called, uh, River Walk Phase One. Right now, in our capital improvement plan, it's called River Walk Northwest of Sandy Cove. And that section is between, uh, essentially Northern Street and where Kimball Creek meets. The, uh, where Kimball Creek meets two oh two approximately, and I'll show you a quick clip if I, if I may. Um, it's something I had drafted recently to update our. Update some things, and so I'll just kind of show you. Kind of a fun way of, uh, viewing, viewing the project is digitally, so here on the left you'll see Kimball Creek. And on the right side, it kind of fades out, but if you're familiar with the map of the Sandy Cove area, you'll recognize that big peninsula that's up there on the top right. Uh, that peninsula would kind of connect in a wetland-y kind of way to the park that is currently, uh, in. Stabilization efforts, so we did a stabilization effort last year, continuing that this year. And potentially into next year, and all these kind of link together, and. This is really what I meant by we're connecting a bunch of pieces together, as Sandy Cove is very much going to be the next part of how River Walk interfaces with the historic downtown. But right now, what we have access to is the bank stabilization project, and then this is a trail project, uh, that has. Uh, sorry, I know my mouse is delayed, so I'll try to keep up here, but. This here is a, think of it as kind of a spoken wheel design where a couple sections of trail are all merging on a high point on this historic spur that would have crossed over. To the other side of the Snoqualmie River on a rail, a rail. Bridge. Um, the remnants are still there, and it's a high point right there along the, the road, and so we're going to use this kind of a center point of the spoke, and then it goes off, off across to. Wetland crossings over to two, two trail segments. It's gonna parallel two oh two, there's gonna be a lot of stormwater infrastructure that we're trying to implement there just to improve the quality. Of that space, and especially the slews that are kind of tucked in there behind near where it says Sandy Cove. Uh, and the last piece that you might be familiar with, it's part but not part of this project, is the removal of the White House at seven seven oh two. Um, if you've driven down two oh two recently, it's the White House, it's got boarded up. Uh, doors, windows, so, um, that's the one, it's, we're in the middle of. Getting all of our permits styled in so that we can demo that project as soon as possible, and that will kind of yield us more space to bring our trail through, so. That is the most pressing River Trail project that we have right now. But as I mentioned, it clearly connects to other things like Sandy Cove or larger, more multimodal transportation projects like Town Center Phase Three, which is just parallel and across the street from. River Trail Phase One, and. Then we have a couple of projects that are scattered out in the future in terms of capital planning wise, and that would be the Arboretum Trail Section, which would be across the. Street from the high school across Park Avenue. If you've gone out there, it's a field and there's a dedicated, um, I think it's a. Oh, uh. Some kind of club that worked with the city, created a small arboretum that's fenced in right now. And it would span from there to Meadow Brook. And in addition to that, further into the future, we're looking at a boardwalk project that would link Sandy Cove to the Revetment Project on Park Avenue. So if you were to travel down Park Avenue, you would historically have seen it as a two-way street, but right now it's a one-way. And that Revetment is the stabilization of the bank right below that corner, they protected our stormwater and water infrastructure. Um, and now connects over to River View, so. That's kind of the intent here is we're bringing all the pieces together, and it's all building off each other and background work, and we're kind of starting from the ground up in some sense, in that we're. Doing all these stabilization projects on the banks at critical junctures in our. In our open space and park infrastructure, and then we'll kind of seek the trail opportunities as we have time and ability. But that was quite a lot, so.
No, it was good, in the brown compared to the gray there?
Different, uh, surface material. So, uh, like a soft surface trail bark rather than gravel, this is not formal yet, we're still. There is permitting considerations for how much, um, impervious surface we are allowed to have, and so we are working through that right now. It's, it's either going to be either a soft surface like a bark trail, or it'll be a packed gravel trail. So we're gonna probably prioritize different areas for their unique features, so. When you get further away from a road into a much more natural space, we will have to, well, we will choose to pivot to a. Uh, bark type material, or if we're closer to a road, acting in a. You know, a very naturalistic way to a sidewalk, then we'll probably go for more pack gravel. And that's kind of the intent there.
Okay. Um, you know, as for show hands, any planning commissioners, uh, have any? Anything else of?
There's so much to this, I feel like I could go on for days, but I don't want to bore you guys, and. Uh, I want to make sure I can answer any questions you have, too.
Oh, definitely, yeah, definitely got a good update, so I certainly appreciate it. I see, uh, hand up by, uh, Vice Chair Tesman?
Yeah, uh, just a question, so it sounded like, you, you know, there's a lot of coordination with the tribe, that's great, that produced the nomenclature change. Uh, something that I saw with the announcement of the opening of Tenant Trailhead was that they incorporated. Um. Uh, local language into the trail signs, is that envisioned for, for this project?
Yeah, um, so I've. I've kind of been, I have so many projects and they're kind of running in parallel. And when I've coordinated with the tribe, this comes up, and I've, we have implemented it in every project that we've kind of been. Ground-truthing and getting towards construction now. Um, we accepted that feedback from them in our most recent, um. Uh, in-person meeting, and so, yeah, we intend to kind of do a collaborative signage effort with them, uh, probably the intent will be. Minimizing impact to the habitat and the restoration efforts that are gonna go on right peripheral to the trail. And to kind of bring awareness of the tribal history in the region and the significance of the area for them, but that. We're going. That. To them to write, uh, if that makes sense. Um, and we will kind of pick up some of the other details on, you know. Uh, connecting up with other trails and things of that nature that we already have in the, in the city.
So, so I hear you, right, then there will, it, uh, there will be essentially, uh, educational interpretive. Um, aspect signage or whatever along the trail as you're going?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, not to too much. There's always fine balance in this, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, anywhere we have like a lot of infrastructure going in like that. High point where the spur is. We will look at. Uh, in informative signage and not overwhelm any of the users, but. Yeah, that's, uh, that's exactly the end.
That's great, thank you.
Okay. Uh, by a raised hand, any other commissioners have any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, appreciate that update.
Yes. Um. Alright, I was supposed to say one more thing, do you mind if I?
Please go ahead.
Catch, um, there is a way to keep updated on these projects if you're interested. Um, let me go past my checking on grizzly bears thing, and, uh, so if you were to now get to the city's website and go to your government. Then Departments and Parks and Public Works, so kind of a standard rundown, if you've ever been to the C D Department, same thing, but jump over to Public Works. There's a capital improvement plan, and there's a page called Capital Plan Snapshots. And within this page is a month-to-month update of all capital projects, their status, and what we're going to be doing in the future, and it kind of looks. As a, it's kind of a public way for me to showcase where things are currently, if, especially if we are forecasting quite a ways in the future. And it kind of helps people understand if we're going to be doing paving or flurry seal on their road anytime soon, so. Uh, you can find all of the ongoing projects that way. Some projects are cast out in the future, and if you wanted to track those, you'll have to follow us at the Parks and Public Works Committee, that will kind of be the first. Uh, public-facing step that most projects won't, and, you know, get started with, and that will likely be design, uh, prep for work for design. Uh, and or budgeting things, they seem to coalesce, so.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing for the mixed-use final plan amendments. And I have a script here. Um, to open the amendment, do we have anybody online that, uh, you see? Okay, well. Okay, so nonetheless, I'm gonna open the public hearing. At seven twenty-nine. Yeah. Since there were notifications and mailings that went out, uh, there should be, should be something pretty well-known. And seeing nobody online, is there anybody? Present that managed to make a comment? Regarding. Mixed-use final plan amendments. Okay, seeing nobody online or nobody present? I will close the public hearing then at. Seven thirty P M, May sixth, twenty twenty-four, and I'll save reading the very nice script put together. So that being the case, let's move on, staff. Summary. Of the, uh, mixed-use final plan code amendments.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Andrew Levens, I'm a land use planning consultant, and, uh, I've been hired by the city to. Help process this and other amendments, but tonight we're here to talk about, um, proposed amendments to the mixed-use final plan for Snoqualmie Ridge One. So just some background to, as a refresher for mixed-use final plan is, um, the mixed-use final plan is. Uh. All mixed-use developments in, developed according to the mixed-use zone in the city. Uh, a mixed-use final plan must accompany those proposals and is typically conditioned. With certain requirements that govern the build-out and development of that, um, mixed-use development over time. Um, so. Um, tonight, we are here specifically to discuss the. Uh, amendments and revisions to three conditions of the Snoqualmie Ridge One mixed-use final plan that was originally approved in nineteen ninety-five. Uh, these amendments are. Numbers four, five, and forty-one. The reasoning for. Uh, choosing. Or proposing these amendments for revision is, um, they are. The way they are written, they. So for a conditions numbers four and five. The way these conditions are written, they were originally intended to provide the city of Snoqualmie and the master developer of Snoqualmie Ridge One. Um, assurance that the city would not change their mind about certain things over time as Snoqualmie Ridge, Ridge One was developed. And it also just, um. Maintained the developer's obligation to the city to develop as the mixed-use final plan dictated. However, now that Snoqualmie Ridge One area is, um, substantially completely developed. Uh, they are currently, the conditions four and five are currently, um. Complicating. The way that by which the city must address, uh, changes to land use regulation in Snoqualmie Ridge One. Uh, as those needs arise, specifically, this effort is the precursor to a later effort wherein the, uh. The types, uh, amounts, the types and amounts of retail use in the Snoqualmie Ridge Neighborhood Center. Will be later modified, and then also. The length of time that a space, a retail space on Center Boulevard must sit vacant before it can be rented to a non-retail use. Tonight, we're not discussing, uh, or I should say, these amendments. Do not pertain specifically to, uh, changes, future changes to these, uh, retail requirements in the neighborhood center. Uh, they are intended to be the groundwork for those later changes, and. They're intended to increase procedural clarity. By which the city can address, uh, these land use changes, so that's requirement, that's condition number four and five. Uh, as you can see in this, in Table One of Staff Report, these two conditions are proposed to be deleted and removed. From the mixed-use final plan, so they would no longer apply. Um. And then condition number forty-one. Uh, originally as written. Uh, dictated that the uses in the B-zone of Title Seventeen of the Snoqualmie Municipal Code would. Dictated that the uses in the B zone of Title seventeen of the Snowqualmie municipal code would be those that are allowable. In the neighborhood center. Noqualmie Ridge. However, the city municipal does not have that zone, so either at the time this was written, it was a typo or. The zones have since changed. So we have proposed to modify this to reflect. The uses identified in the BR one zone, which is the list of uses that I was intended to be. To be. Allowed in Snowqualmie Ridge and also are the more consistent with the types of retail uses. That the community development committee has identified as desirable for the ridge. So that, and so as you can see there, that's also on the table on the right here. The B zone, the B zone does not exist, so we are proposing to modify it to identify the BR one zone. As part of this effort, staff has evaluated. This proposal's consistency with the mixed use district ordinance in chapter seventeen thirty. There are a number of findings here wherein staff determined that these amendments are consistent with the requirements. Of the mixed use district ordinance and. As a result, staff is recommending that the planning commission. Make a recommendation to approve to delete mixed use final plan. And to modify condition forty one as proposed. Staff is recommending that you approve a recommendation of these changes to city council.
Okay, scroll up to the four, five, forty one. Table.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, that's. Okay, so I wanted to pull the commission again in reverse order and just see if there's any comments, questions regarding those. I think that's a good. A place to do that. Commissioner Smith, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I read through these over the weekend and, and. Didn't have any, at first, when I first started reading, it's like, oh, boy, this sounds interesting, but it actually seemed kind of anticlimactic as I was digging into it.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Smith?
Uh, no, no, sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
Yeah, I have nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Crone?
Uh, nothing from me. I agree with Commissioner Smith. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. Not, I, I'm okay with these proposed changes, but. I'd like to see the list of what's included in the B one zone. If we're moving this criteria over to that, I'd like to know what's included there. And then the other piece that this is laying the groundwork for, as I understand, is that. Sorry, how did you say it? That if a retail space is left vacant for a certain period of time, that they're able to put non-retail uses in place. I have a problem with that. I'd like to understand that language a lot more clearly because. I. That can really change the character of a street and that's the center of, of the little township up here. And I would have the same problem for downtown Snowqualmie. It's, it can be very easy to backfill with uses that turn away from the street. And really cut into the sense of community, so. Those are my comments.
Great questions. Andrew's bringing up the permitted uses table, so. This is a multi-stepped process. And just changing. Questions of approval doesn't change the municipal code. It just allows us to go into the municipal code through a separate exercise, coming back to the planning commission. To make adjustments to Center Boulevard and all of the provisions that go along. Including, you know, how long a business could be vacant. So we're not, we're not attempting to do that in this exercise. We're just. Allowing us to proceed forward at another given point in time to go in and do. Future code amendments. Looks, looks like we have another lineup.
Customer Johnson?
Thank you, yeah. That very question is. By my recollection is essentially how the process got started was that there were decisions made with regard to center. That the city interpreted as being allowed under the current. Combination of code and mixed use final plan. And this is an attempt to begin the rectification process of, of what had happened before. But it, it can't be done in one fell swoop. So this basically gets the ball rolling and it is a bit of a, a long arm plan because. There are a couple of other things we're doing at the comprehensive plan as well that kind of set the stage for. Some of the other things will address that exact concern. Even to this point has been a process of. The better part of two years or so. Of, of work. So absolutely, that's getting to that issue is. Is, is a huge part of why we're doing this. Not the only reason, but it's a huge part of why.
Yeah, I feel like there's already on Center Street, there was the most recent uses that got put in were. Some kind of like a new way of health that they just covered all the windows and turned away from the street. And then there's the urgent care, which. I mean, honestly, as a use is good, but same thing, like completely turned away from the street. And that, those are two prime corners. And so.
That is exactly.
Yeah, and that's, it is one of the problems. I, I call it kind of easy button leasing where you don't really. Give an S H I T about the town where you own the property and. And creating a sense of community. And I think it's on us to put that bear back on the landlord. Another issue, since we're here talking about it, is there's been a vacant suite. Right next to the dog groomers for a long time and it's a really small space. But it was a little daycare. I reached out and talked to the business owner and I think I, I'm not happy with. What has been communicated from the landlord to the tenant, which is basically that they're not allowed to do anything, which. I don't know how far our reach can go, but since it feels like the landlord is. Trying to engage this process. I have heard from multiple business owners that they're told they're not allowed to sublease their space. And, and so those spaces sit vacant and those business owners are suffering and that's not typically how that's done.
Yeah, so I think that this process right here allowing us to amend the mixed use final plan allows us to then. Address these kinds of concerns. It's that without doing this step first, we can't do anything about the very issues that you're bringing up. You're spot on with the concerns. Do this. And we can't do it in all, in one fell swoop. And then there are some other policies that could be coming down the line. One of the issues with having a smaller community development. Department on a whole, not that anyone's fault by any means, it's just part of the times that we're going through ever since COVID. And we're still recovering from that, is that it is hard to tackle multiple issues at the same time with the limited staff. So addressing the issue of, on occasion, there could be a landlord that. For whatever reason wants to hold a, a building or, or a unit vacant, maybe they're holding out that. They could claim, well, we're not able to sub or, or to, to rent it because it's not space for the allowed uses. So. Instead, why don't we knock down the median wall that connects two. Units together to allow a bigger space and then, you know, they just have some sort of a plan and they're allowed to just hold a, a unit vacant for as long as they want. There are other things that. Other cities have done across the US to address those kinds of issues. But again, we wouldn't be able to implement any of those until we. With the item in front of us here.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with these changes. It was just laying the groundwork for what felt like things that I do have a problem with.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kilkup. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I see Vice Chair Testman?
Yeah, thanks Chair. I, I think I have several questions and first I just want to say Commissioner Kilkup's questions were, were spot on. But since we have the land use descriptions in front of us and I know we're looking specifically at section two, commercial business. But if, if we, if we look at that. So. Let me know if my understanding of this is wrong, right? But if no changes are made, these amendments are not approved. Then mixed use final plan conditions four and five would remain in place in addition to forty one. And so if that's the case, the way I read four and five is essentially. The mixed use final plan is, is, is the final word. Anytime a conflict exists between what's listed in the final plan versus what's listed in the code, I guess, let me pause there. And say, is that accurate?
I would say yes, and just point out that it's the mixed use final plan and then the code that. The Snowqualmie Ridge one was vested to when this document and agreement was signed. So no subsequent development regulations. In the municipal code except as required for. A public safety for health purposes would.
Would supersede. Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, so if that's the case, if my read is accurate, then. I'm actually really concerned with applying amendment forty one. Taking zoning BR one and putting that into effect, just as, just as an example. It looks like fast food restaurants would be a permitted use with that zoning. And, and so my concern is. If four and five aren't removed, they stay in effect. And we only action forty one to make that land use change. Then I have a hard time understanding how without immediate effect. BR one would, would, would be applicable. What am I missing there?
So there are a couple of layers to this. One of them is, so you've got the mixed use final plan. You've got the Snowqualmie municipal code, you have zone BR one. In addition to that, there's a retail use requirement. That would. The. The mixed use final plan, it, it's back to portions of the. Downtown Historic District Retail Overlay Zone. So this. The BR one is kind of like a correction. It's kind of a procedural, almost technical thing as we believe that was the zone that was intended to be referenced. It's in practice sort of probably what's been applied. But when you come into seventeen thirty seven twenty. Of this downtown, downtown historic district retail overlay zone, you have a further requirement of types of retail uses that are allowed. So some things that you might see, the BR one zone would not be allowed on Center Boulevard and I will. I would, I do believe, but I could be mistaken, that this retail requirement is only for corner. Corner uses, but I, I, I'm not positive on that, but I. I just wanted to point out that I'm not, I, I don't believe that this retail use requirement applies to all of Center Boulevard, but just the corner suites. Anyways, this is the retail use requirement that is. Overlay on top of what we are allowed, what we are proposing to be allowed in BR one. And this retail use requirement also is a part of that discussion that's forthcoming regarding. Minimum vacancy requirements. And whether or not. A landlord could potentially get a waiver in these critical, these spaces that are critical to the vitality of. Snowqualmie's retail districts. So. I think that's a really important discussion. And it is definitely relevant to what we're talking about. Tonight, if we, if we are. Discussing forty one here. With that kind of context, I would ask if. Your concerns or if it raises new.
Yeah. I, I, I guess, let's just, let's just do this. I, I appreciate that detailed, a detailed answer, but just. In short and simple terms, it, would that be accurate if, if four and five. Are not modified, they're kept. But forty one is actioned and BR one is put, is, is, is the change, would it not take immediate effect?
The uses identified in BR one would immediately be allowed to. Exist on Center Boulevard, except where the development standards of Snowqualmie Ridge. Point to the downtown historic retail overlay zone where this retail use requirement would further. Filter the types of uses that could occur.
And this downtown historic district retail overlay zone would apply on Center and Better Way, even though it's specifically. Titled downtown historic district?
Yes, that's correct. So I will, I, I do want to say I'm not positive that I don't have the. Snowqualmie Ridge development standards in front of me, but it's my belief that only corner. There are certain corner spaces identified in the development standards. That specifically point to this retail use requirement. And so what you are, what. In short, could occur was in those corner spaces. Any retail use in this list identified in the downtown historic zone. And any BR one. Added use occur as described by this table in the areas that aren't in the corner spaces.
And, and, and extending that, if we scroll up and look at section one point zero, BR one allows for. Housing usage as well, correct?
I think there are.
Daycare, second story, multifamily dwelling units above non-residential units. Home occupations, yeah.
I would say the retail, I would also point out that the retail use requirement is only for the ground floor, so. These other types of uses. Table. One caveat, our second floor only uses within areas identified by the downtown retail overlay district. So like daycare, we are seeing. It would only be allowed on the second floor.
Yes, customer Johnson?
If Commissioner Testman was suggesting not striking four and five. I don't believe that we'd be able to address any of the concerns that Commissioner Kilkup had brought up.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that leads kind of naturally to another question I had, which is. At least per the information provided in the write-up. We, we currently work around the, the issues that exist, right, through a waiver process. And so my question then becomes, why, why is that waiver process insufficient?
So that waiver process, that very waiver process is what's under discussion as part of that forthcoming effort. So for example, these components of that, that we are just seeing. That being the minimum time that a space must be vacant. Right now, it's a hundred and twenty days. As identified by the Snowqualmie municipal code. As part of that future effort, it could be modified to be extend, extended or reduced. Currently, the discussion amongst business owners, stakeholders and elected officials. Is that that would be extended because there is. I think there's a lot of support for the sentiments that you're saying. People understand that retail uses on the ground floor in these areas. Are really critical to maintain that vitality of those districts.
Then one issue is that currently. That it's done is that if one of those requests after the hundred and twenty days are up comes, comes into the city. And it has been exclusively the. And uh, it has been exclusively the uh. Community Development Director who has the oversight over that. And uh, while I am certainly not questioning current uh, Community Development Director. There could be others either in the past or in the future who's uh, who um, could wield the power to. Leave businesses waivers that uh, are accounted to the desires of the community as a whole. Um. Would uh, would say that I think that that has occurred in the past and um. Yeah, again, to be clear, not talking about current city administrator. Uh, Community Development Director Artetje, uh, but others.
So I think. And just go back to your question, um. These, so. The the uh, impetus behind Knight's hearing is. Um, to is that room. The thought process is removing four and five would allow the city to make. Um, amendments to the types of uses in this. Zone in this part of Snowqualmie Ridge. Uh, specifically as they relate to retail uses. And then the forthcoming amendment. To the municipal code. Uh, regarding retail waivers is really where this type of discussion is going to have the most impact. I think it's really important to keep in mind um, currently as well. Uh, but. Where we get into the specifics of. Those requirements will be is um, really part of a future discussion. However. I will say the appropriateness of the B R one zone is. Um, definitely something to be considered by the commissioners. Uh, as it's something that is. Uh, for a proposal tonight.
Yeah. Um, another concern I have is, you know. Obviously, a- and and you talked to this in the introduction, right? Uh, that. You you outlined that the the mixed use final plan is what it is and was implemented. Uh, due in no small part to protect the city. Uh, to ensure that the developer developed according to plan and also provided the developer. Protections to ensure consistency throughout the different phases. So I get that. But if we go back and look at some of the source documents, uh. Uh, quoted at the bottom. You know, and you go and see what the stated. Uh, approved by the nineteen ninety five Planning Commission. Purpose for retail, and I'm talking about uh, the first link in particular. Um. It said, hey. The goal with retail uh, in Snowqualmie Ridge is to serve the citizens basically with their day-to-day needs. Uh, but never to supplant. Uh, downtown historic Snowqualmie. Um, for retail purposes. Now. In reality, I I think it's fair to say. That, you know, center has certainly supplanted. I mean, it center fulfills those day-to-day needs with with Safeway and Bartels and and those businesses, even the urgent care. So that one's debatable, but if I I guess my point is, you know. That Planning Commission, that that Planning Commission nineteen ninety five had a specific vision. And so. Um, I have some trepidation with us kind of throwing that away. Um. Just, just. To simplify. Waiver processes and and the like, so, uh, you know, I don't know if I'm missing something, but. It just seems like the baby out with the bathwater for s- for stuff that we've. Uh, unless there are some examples you can highlight, we've sufficiently dealt with via the waiver process.
Yes, Community Development Director.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure if this will help provide any more clarity. But. Look, Snowqualmie Ridge one is built out, um. The particular. Conditions of approval that have been identified were. Thought. Thoughtfully acknowledged. About. A little over a year and a half ago. Um, with our previous legal counsel. They were identified specifically to help. Begin. An integration process of Snowqualmie Ridge. One in the municipal code. Essentially, right now, we have. Multiple development codes existing within the city. And to some degree, we will always have that. But. If the council, and this is a council priority, if the council would like to see. It become. Strictive to add additional. To Center Boulevard. The city. Itself has no. Provision. To amend the municipal code. Because the Snowqualmie Ridge conditions of approval. Override. The direct ability for the city to 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 amend. Um, tho- those provisions regulating retail services, the number of days. Is such forth. It also, the one of the. With the city's ability to develop. Um, set public works development standards. What what standards apply? Taking strips um, rights away. Right now, we have. More than one set of development standards within the city. Um, and this ability to move forward with a mixed use plan amendment would allow the city to. Address that issue as well. Again, they all require. Individual provisions. Uh, associated with with amendments. That need to go through the Planning Commission and then through. The development uh, c- council, uh, Community Development Committee, and then on to the council. That being said, I I just wanted to come up and say that. Example, the B R one. Zone correction um, identified is something that. Is is too much or too difficult to address at this point. Uh, the commission might be entertained to just, you know, select the first two. Um. Uh, makes you final plan amendments and forego third one. So those are just some of my thoughts and happy to answer any additional questions.
No, I appreciate that. Appreciate that. Uh, I'll I'll yield to Commissioner Koko.
Commissioner Koko?
Yes, um, I would propose that we do. Um, to the extent that Vice Chair Testman is comfortable uh, approving four and five and hold on forty one. And what I would like to know is currently, what are the governing documents? Because it feels like there's several overlays that are happening, and I'm not clear from the information we've covered here. What is the current state? And and what are we agreeing to if we allow the B R one? Cause. If it, if those retail uses only apply to corner suites, that is very different than of what we're approving. In in transitioning that whole section into B R one, and I agree with Vice Chair Testman. That what we have currently isn't. It's not elegant, but it's not broken. Um, and I don't want to agree to something that I don't fully understand. Um, I also feel as though I I do want to make sure that the city has proper approvals and can modify that hundred and twenty days is. It's very short and it would be very easy for a a landlord to game that system. Um. And so I I I would like to see that changed. I just think that. We need more information to say yes to something, uh, if we're making such large changes.
Thank you, Christopher. So. Just to add a a couple comments, um. In general. Waivers, i- if you have waivers particularly concentrated on a single member of staff. That's just not good. Management, it it decouples what we're trying to do with the legislative and whatnot. So that's, that's one thing. That um, I I think it'd be good to have the provision. Uh, to allow the council to do their job, right? And the commissions. Second. To be chained to um, a nineteen ninety five vision that seems to be. Not well understood, I also don't think. Is why, so I definitely agree with removing. Four and five, because then then we all got to go to work, we all got to do our job. I also believe in nineteen ninety five, there was a very strong. Um. Historic downtown versus ridge. Um, almost rivalry, you know, you know, bordering on animosity. And I think that vision that you read Vice Chair Testman was meant to. Meant to, you know, calm those fears. I don't believe. Uh, the situation is very different twenty twenty four than it was nineteen ninety five with respect to historic downtown in the ridge. I think we. Generally, maybe not totally, but generally feel like one city at this point. So I totally. Um. The four and five change. Um, what? Uh, I was gonna ask a question, but uh, let me, let me pause and give the tier Florida.
Yeah, I want to mention also on the differences in retail downtown versus uh, on center. Um, I uh, uh, I. My understanding from our is that they don't uh, currently, uh, because things have changed over the last few decades. Uh, they don't currently themselves is in direct competition with each other, uh, rather more in sort of game theory that they are growing together. Um, and that one complements the other. And in a lot of ways, they're really serving slightly different communities in the. Uh, most folks who will come to Snowqualmie from out of town are tourists uh, coming to uh, visit the falls. Uh. They could go to places much more similar to uh, center. Home and find similar kinds of businesses, uh, but uh, they typically can't find a lot of places like uh, the the. Be the environment, the streetscape of downtown Snowqualmie. And uh, that's where they're going to spend their time. So in a way, they're sort of um, largely non-overlapping uh, consumer bases. Um. So, there.
Thank you, thank you, customer Johnson. So. It it at this point, the commission is leaning towards uh, agreeing on the changes to four and five. But wanting to flesh out what we're trying to do with forty one. Before agreeing to that change. That that's where we sit right now. And uh, again, I I gave him a comment about waivers. I mean, um, I I don't like. Waivers as a way to make approvals like that. That's just not, that's just not the way the code should be. So that's why I'm. Removing four and five and letting uh, let folks do their job. But is that uh?
Yeah, so as part of that.
That uh, put too much a wrinkle. I mean, uh, obviously. But uh, that too much uh, wrinkle. Attempting to do going forward?
No, I th- well, I think it achieves the objectives of increasing the procedural clarity uh. Processing amendments. Um, in Snowqualmie Ridge with regards. To uh, retail uses. Um, that would leave. Um. In reverence to a zone that no longer, either no longer or never existed. Uh, that's the only. Piece that gets lost um, by omitting the revisions to forty one. That being said, that continues the business as usual condition. This is the way this plan has been operating for. So um. In practice. I'm not sure it. Excuse me. I'm not sure that it. Um. Is really that subs- that substantial of an omission? Um, I think it's something that because we were opening up the MUFP, uh, we identified it as a potential. Um, however, if the commission would like to move forward. Uh, removing. Uh, conditions four and five does. Assist great groundwork for um. Your amendments to retail waiver. And use requirements. In uh, on Center Boulevard. And it continues the status quo. Uh, when it comes to what uses are permitted on the rid.
And and as far as forty one goes, there might be a point in the future we can do that, but for this proposal. And again, I'm I'm not closing discussion. Obviously, we had, we'll do another roundtable just to make sure with some tips of concern here. But um, we can revisit that, but I don't think it's, I don't think we're ready. In this proposal to go ahead and tackle that. So now, uh, first let me directly. Does that? Uh, does that answer the concern that you brought up?
Um. Y- yes and no. I I I think I think we're fully aligned. I I'm not prepared to be supportive of forty one. Um. For for four and five, uh. I I get it, right? You're saying the elected accountable city council. Will. Have full say uh, over Snowqualmie Ridge. It'll be addressed via the municipal code. Um. I just don't understand fully, and this is on me. The checks that will 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 be in play. I know that sort of came up in the discussion. You. You said, you said a lot of it would still come back to the Planning Commission, um. Um, I'd like to understand that more. But uh. Absent, absent being fully comfortable on. What it looks like in in a, in a post acceptance of four or five world, uh, I I personally can't support. Any of the amendments.
Hmm, okay. Commissioner Koke?
Um, I would support Vice Chair Testman. I think he has a really good eye for this. I agree. I really think we have to be careful. I'd like to see like some kind of. Flow chart of like, what are the approvals? Where are, who who's? Like, where's the application made? Who, which is it? City Council approval? Is it Planning Commission? Um, I I would like to understand that. I understand we're trying to clean things up, so. What is the current and what are we moving towards? And then how are these amendments adjusting those? Because. Um. These changes just feel really blind and unsafe. For what we're being asked to to agree to here, because we don't have all the information. And it feels like some, there's a reason this is happening. And I remember a comment from months ago about. The landlord, uh. Potentially for some of those properties wanting to add multifamily to what they're doing and. Um. Yeah, I guess I'm I'm. I'm I'm, my spidey sense is up on what, what are we doing here?
Director Artetje?
Well, one other idea that comes to mind because it is very technical work that we're doing, um. And it is tied to future development code amendments that we haven't prepared yet. Um, on the face, there's, there's nothing. That changes with the city. Reality by striking these two conditions from the mixed use final plan. There's nothing's gonna change tomorrow. The next day or the next day after that. We would be forced at the city to come back to the Planning Commission with development code changes. Um, you strike out and underline code amendments. One idea is that we could do that. We could actually put the mixed use final plan amendment. On hold until we develop the amendments. And code and show you. You know, the. The future amendments that we haven't prepared yet as another way to understand and help support this work.
Yeah, I think uh. Uh, I I think that would be helpful. Yeah, I think it's very helpful. So uh, Vice Chair Testman?
Yeah, I I think. I mean, w- we're saying in this conversation, there is no imminent need. To rushes, and this is, these are major changes. From my perspective. And so I think having that fuller picture. Like Commissioner Kilcup outlined. And like he just talked to a Community Development Director Artetje. I think. That's, that's responsible. I think that's where we need to be.
Okay. And I do have a question to ask, uh, are there any pending waivers? On Center?
No.
Okay, so there's no pending waiver request. So then we do have time.
I have a question.
Staff's gonna correct me if I'm.
Oh, sorry.
If um, but even if there was a waiver that had currently been requested, that would be under whatever. Or make changes anyway. Is that correct, staff? If, I know, so if someone had uh, submitted a waiver request. And and after they had submitted it, we changed the rules, that wouldn't affect that.
I just was curious, there was one. It is uh, stick wicked uh, right now. Uh, okay. Uh, Commissioner Koko?
I'm curious, if a waiver request comes in currently, does it come to us or city council?
It goes to uh, my understanding of the Community Development Director.
Goes to.
There are cer-. There are certain criteria for approval in the uh, re. Zone and. Um. Could make a. Determination of whether or not the waiver is consented.
I would just like to. The staff's already. Begun the process for addressing the retail waivers. It it's not just the Center Boulevard. Um, Andrew Levens, our contract planner, has been working. On amendments to the historic retail. To address retail waivers, um, the the extended days that a a business could be vacant. Um, it is a a bit of a parallel movement. It's just that the staff has the ability to go in right now and and changes uh, draft amendments to the retail relay district in the historic downtown. We just can't do the same thing for Center Boulevard because of the mixed use final plan conditions of approval. So, um,
To to add on, yeah, just to add on to that, um, the reversing the order or not reversing necessarily, but focusing on the waiver, the content of the waiver amendments first. Um, the effect of that would be once passed, the changes would not apply to the ridge until these amendments were addressed. So staff's thinking was um, processing these amendments first would allow for those future changes to become immediately applicable once enacted. However, this is something that could be addressed at a later time as well.
Yeah, I I thought is we want to understand what it what it's going to look like before striking these. Yeah. Okay. Oh, I see. Much hands up. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I guess maybe, maybe putting that question a a different way. Have any landlords had conversations with the Community Development Department about uh, changes to these provisions?
Uh, to my knowledge, the landlords have not been as involved in that conversation, although they've been invited. Uh, the business owners associations um, on the ridge as well as in the downtown um, have both been very active in those conversations. And in fact, we are meeting Wednesday with the Business Association.
Thank you. Vice Chair Testman?
Yeah, I mean, for my, for the, for my fellow commission members, I I think we table this because we just heard action is in progress on improving the waiver process and making that what we want to be. Presumably that'll address most or all of your concerns, Chair, uh, on on doing governance the right way. And then when we look at this document, it says the whole reason for being to improve the retail situation in the city. It says the amendments currently proposed do not seek to address the concerns of the Community Development Committee regarding the retail use and waiver requirements in Snoqualmie Ridge at this time. So I just, I don't think we need to action this right now.
Listener Director Atetia?
Yeah, I um, just I'll try to say it one more time clearly. We have the ridge and and retail businesses on Center Boulevard that are not retail. And the city can do nothing about that. We can't, we can't go into the code and help preserve or encourage more retail because we can't get to the the development code because these conditions of approval that govern override the municipal code. Their own development code, but we can go do the work to address the needs of the business and and the city councils, the council priority to cultivate economic development further on retail historic district. If the planning commission would like to consider um, the proposed downtown retail historic downtown retail district changes that govern um, you know, the length of time and the percentage of retail. While they think about the mixed use final plan conditions of approval, I think that would be probably the in trying to understand the full three hundred sixty degree picture of what removing these conditions could allow the city to do both on the ridge and in the in the downtown historic district.
Yes. Customer Johnson.
Yeah, the commission may remember that uh, there were a couple of corner uh, stores or um, units on center that were held vacant for quite a period of time. And uh, there was nothing that anyone could do about it until uh, the uh, option was uh, presented to uh, the city to uh, units with uh, non-retail, um, since the hundred and twenty days being a rather short period of time had already elapsed. Um, so there could, that that situation can easily um, and uh, removing uh, four and five would allow the city to then address those issues, which until uh, that's done, um, yeah, then landlords could just hold spaces vacant for as long as they want until the city agreed to let them fill it with whatever it was they wanted to be um, uh, you know, law offices and it could be um, uh, um, you know, all kinds of things. Uh, so that's uh, that's the issue with holding those uh, four and five uh, in place. Uh, again, uh, right now there are any vacancies that I know on standard, so perhaps it doesn't feel as urgent. Uh, but just the point is that uh, at some point, if uh, the city does want to have some say over that uh, problem, uh, then four and five would have to be addressed.
Yeah, there was no desire to not address desire was to let's see what you want to replace it with um, in conjunction with addressing four and five. Let's not just address four and five and then see what and I think there wants to be a deeper understanding of what the future is going to be. Um, Commissioner Kilkup?
Um, yeah, I agree with everything you just said. Thank you, Chair Merseyak. Um, also, um, yeah, I think what we're looking at here is incomplete. And so it is very hard for us to say that, yeah, this makes sense to make these changes when we're not looking. I I believe that staff has a full plan on where we're going. It's just we're not able to see it. At least that's how I feel. Um, and these are major changes. I do understand that it's binding right now for there to be a development plan in place, um, that's overriding the code. Um, so I understand the need for this. Um, I I did have a question from what um, council member Johnson just said about the spaces are being vacant and then the the businesses that got put in place. Was that then, was that done through the waivers and through the council? I I'm just a little confused here on the current procedure?
Uh, yeah, that was done by uh, because under the current procedure, it goes directly to the um, community development director, the community development director then uh, had the approval to do that uh, without uh, any community involvement of any kind, uh, input from council. In fact, council uh, well, I'll just leave it there.
Something on Center Street that wouldn't be there. Says, not that place.
And I would just, uh, as the second component of kind of what you were saying, just to be clear, removing four and five, if this was done today, the process would be uh, substantially identical to what is in place for the downtown retail. So it's not going into uh, altering the length through which allowing the city to uh, to update the code at a later time.
Uh, yeah, and just to also said earlier as well, um, that's again, uh, waiting uh, to do this until we have uh, the specifics in place for what um, the staff and uh, council had envisioned for replacing uh, the uh, the current pr- practice with um, wouldn't make a difference because uh, if we were to just remove four and five right now, nothing would substantially change because we haven't done anything to change the code. So again, to the to the issue of is this urgent right now? We need to do this uh, today. Uh, I would agree with uh, the sentiments shared earlier by some of the commissioners that uh, no, because we don't have the replacement here for you. Uh, so if the commission wanted to wait uh, until staff had uh, you know, what are the specifics of what we want to do? Uh, I don't see anything wrong with that.
Yeah, I I think there's definitely a desire to better understand um, what's next. Vice Chair Testman?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that last discussion just made me wonder, is there anything, there are, are there no remedies, no mechanisms within the final plan that allow for addressing issues like the one hundred and twenty days? There's, there's nothing built into the final plan that allows that to be to be tackled. It's literally just the plan is as it was approved in nineteen ninety-five and there's no way to modify it uh, outside of just seeding it over to the municipal code?
So uh, there isn't a, there is a modification process uh, that the mixed use final plan uses. It's actually the process that we're proposing to you tonight. Um, so the the uh, difference, the distinguishing factor, I guess, is that um, this amendment process is uh, slightly more convoluted and requires um, it's a different process where as how Director Artete had mentioned before, the city is uh, considering ways that the Snoqualmie Ridge mixed use final plan could be integrated, better integrated into the municipal code. More effectively administered and modified by the city council. Um, and so this would be a s- this modification is in alignment with that um, with that goal. However, you are correct. Um, a modification could theoretically be proposed just well, it could be proposed, but it'd be quite an extensive effort because uh, it would require amending the way that the mixed use final plan references the municipal code. Um, sorry if that does not make anything clearer, but it is uh, it would be addressing it in that manner would probably result in a uh, or convoluted permit process overall.
So, let me say this somewhat gingerly. The the fact is, the members of the planning commission do not understand it to their satisfaction. So maybe even more than a urgent thing. It's more of a, we we just need to better understand it. And uh, maybe some of that's on us. We need to do a little bit more homework, but I do think uh, particularly uh, Vice Chair Testman and and Commissioner Kilkup have done a lot of homework and saying, look, we're not, we're not comfortable with this without knowing more. And so again, I'm saying a little gingerly, asking the staff, can you give us a little bit more? Do we go ahead and proceed and get this done? So we're not trying to be a roadblock here, but we need to understand a bit better what what's proposed here. Is that fair assessment, guys?
Yes, and I agree. I don't have a problem with the direction that uh, staff's trying to take this. It's just right now, I feel like I'm trying to say yes to uh, not full information. And I think what I want to see also is, and I think this is happening, is that revision to the BR one and the retail uses and what does that exactly apply to? Is it all retail uses for downtown and Center Street? Is it the corner only? Like, what are we talking about exactly here? But yes, what you said is accurate.
Yeah, that's a fair point. That's a fair point. I was not aware that the historic downtown uh, applied. So that that was, that's a fair point. So is it clear what the planning commission is asking?
Um, I think so. As part of this hearing tonight, I believe the planning commission uh, should make a would make a recommendation um, regarding the proposed amendments. Or we would come back, I guess. Okay.
Okay, I I was gonna ask uh, if we need to make a motion to do all this. Okay. So so yeah, we'll wait until uh, we get a bit more information. Again, um, I I love the passion that we've got in the planning commission and the desire to understand more. So please treat it in the in the spirit that we're just, we're trying to we're not trying to be a roadblock here, but we really need to understand this because you got a core part of the city we're talking about um, changing the code on. Good.
So it, oh, I'm so sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
I was going to um, just suggest um, or poll the commission, at what point would it be helpful to see this comeback? Uh, would it be because the retail waiver effort is kind of occurring in parallel? Um, so we can address this uh, again during that process or wait until um, after that retail waiver amendment process?
Again, I'm not sure how technical this is.
We we do on our future agendas list have um, an intro to the downtown historic retail waiver code amendments coming forward to the planning commission. Hopefully would be um, on May, the the second meeting of May. So
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it would be the twenty, the twentieth. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the next meeting would be.
Yeah, so we'd do an intro to that. We could, you know, bring the commission up to speed on what Andrew's been doing. To the business districts. Um, and and that would just be an intro. And then we'd have to come back sometime after that with strikeout underlying code amendment.
Okay.
I I think what I would like to see is the documents that are being re- referenced here in terms of um, what is the new proposed BR one? What is the new proposed retail uses for downtown? If we're gonna tie to those, that's what I'd like to see first before we tie to those without seeing them uh, and what those proposed changes are and just making sure that I'm still not clear if like inline spaces are applicable or not applicable here. Um, and if we're doing away with the waiver process, um, not that I think the waiver process is best, but um, what is the then approval process?
So I would just um, say that currently there's no changes to the BR one zone being discussed at this time. Aside from this uh, condition forty-one. Um, the two items that are currently under discussion are what is the length of time, currently the length of time a space must remain vacant is a hundred and twenty days. That time length is under discussion. The second part uh, as part of that retail waiver waiver discussion is what is the minimum the minimum amount of retail uses, retail storefronts that must occur in a given area? What percentage of storefronts must be a retail use consistent with what we've discussed today? So those are the two, the two uh, future discussion. Um, and it's definitely something we can bring back to you with more information as it's gathered with the uh, with the EDC and members of the community.
Okay, we'll look for updating next meeting. Okay, I I do appreciate the work that uh, I do under, I don't totally understand how technical it is, but I do understand, just looking at the code, that there's a lot of technicalities to get in. So if we could uh, a- again, give us as much information uh, next meeting as possible. The dots, that'd be great.
I would also like to say that I find a lot of comfort waiting to get this where we understand it also in the fact that Community Development Director Artiche would be the person that would be standing guard of all of that right now with the waiver pro- the way the current process works is that makes me feel more comfortable that that we're not in a hurry.
That if a waiver happened, that could
Exactly.
Through something wild on on Center Street.
Right.
So that uh, that's a great comment. Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that also there are just a couple of other things that are in there for uh, what would qualify a business for uh, one of the waivers besides just the time limit. Uh, and one of them is like, uh, for example, a very vague reference to they have to have put forth some effort, but it doesn't say really what that was, uh, apart from a couple of things like uh, putting uh, putting in classified ads in newspapers. It's like anymore. Uh, you know, it doesn't say anything about uh, trying to advertise online, for example. Uh, but there's just a lot of language there that also needs some updating from nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's funny, actually.
Commissioners, I I really appreciate the passion and the homework you've done uh, to bring all this to bear. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, let's move on to item number three, landmark process, landmarking process overview?
Yeah, um, good evening, Commissioners. Emily Artetia, Community Development Director. This will be some training on historic design review. Some training on historic design review um and like from the landmarks in King County. I'm just kind of wondering if this is something that maybe. You'd like to reschedule for another time. It is about. Twenty-five minute commitment to get through the training at this point, and I'm just wondering if there's still interest in doing that now or if.
We we can reschedule. Yeah.
Reschedule, okay.
Yeah, I mean, let me uh let me ask the commissioner, you okay if we uh reschedule? The. Yeah, this agenda item?
Yes.
Yeah, no, no objections.
Okay. I need to make a force on it. Okay, okay, let's go ahead and do that. And then move on to uh other visits, planning. Items of interest. Again, we're gonna go um. Starting with Commissioner Smith.
Always going first now, catching me off guard. Um I, no, I think this was, this was good, good discussion, and it was a good lens for me to kind of step back and think about this from from when I was reading it over the weekend. I think there are. There are a lot of good materials out there. I know it's it's hard to kind of think back to. You know, now thirty years ago, what was sort of the 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 retail vision? Uh I I've, you know, I I. Found like the old comprehensive plan and and even going back, there's a, you you can find um online, you know, old versions of like retail assessments that were done in the in the late nineties, early two thousands that really. Help kind of put in their voice what the vision for kind of the retail and and center uh area was uh on the regional. I think those are good reading. There's. Um just just kind of worth a little research if you get some spare time or having trouble sleeping. But no other comments or actions right now.
Right.
Questions.
Commissioner Lambert?
Uh yeah, real quick, um. If we have an update on what's happening on that uh the retail and and uh. Um apartment space over on Maple Avenue. It's on excavator. So I was kind of wondering.
Okay, we.
They have received their building permit, so. I believe right now they're going through the technicalities with the right of way. I do believe they. Take construction here pretty soon.
This was. Talked about in the um state of the city as the rails mixed-use. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, this was uh the uh design that was approved by the planning commission at least two years.
Yeah. Yeah, with the difference of uh don't cover the stairwells with silos, with grain silos. Yeah, that was the only.
Yes, I remember that.
Dude, yeah.
And then the uh what what's, can, do, do we have any information on this farm store? That is going in that I see a a sign for over by the coffee shop on Railroad?
Yeah, we. Submitted a pre-application a while ago and we gave them the guidelines on what to do for um. Going about. Their development and it. Seems like there's been extensive miscommunication between. Uh the applicant and the building department and I think has been submitted for planning um. So I'm not really sure where the state of that is. I'm. Not sure the building official really understands where the state of that is due to the extensive miscommunications.
So the sign saying coming soon is probably a little off.
I would say that is a very fair statement.
Well, premature.
Yeah.
Um last one, sorry, all about downtown, um the Indian restaurant. Do we know when that will be fin- do we have any idea when that will be finished?
Um they have gone through the approval process. That they need to for planning, so they have that. I believe they may have a tenant improvement permit with the building department. I am not a hundred percent sure. I would have to double check with the building official on that one, but. Based on the progress that they've made, I'm assuming this is coming pretty soon. The applicant seems. Very excited to. Get it open and. From my understanding, they seem fairly close, but I would have to again confirm with the building official.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lambert. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Mr. Crown?
No, I don't have anything tonight. I just wanted to say thanks to the commission for the debate. I really appreciate the sentiments and um especially a a deeper understanding of what's going on. So so thanks to everyone. I'm really happy I'm on this commission.
Good, good. Christian Kilcup?
Nothing further.
Uh Vice Chair Tesman?
Just say thank you to the staff. I know uh you're under-resourced, you and a lot is expected of you, and you do your best every day. Um that's clear every time we meet, so please don't let that be lost.
Yeah, no. Yeah, definitely echo those comments. So um so a couple of things um. I I'm just gonna throw this out there. So in the state of the city, uh there was a bit of a mill site update which talked about the hundred and sixty units going in. It's the twenty-two percent would be set aside for low income. How are they set aside? Because we have townhouses and stuff around town that originally were set aside for low income. Are these going to be? Uh units or? Something up?
I. This topic, I believe it has to do with um documents that were agreed upon for uh multifamily tax exemptions.
Yeah, I believe that it is for, if memory serves, I believe it was for fifty years.
Oh, it is fifty years. Okay, well, that that works.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that's with the extension. Yes, that's provided that the council was to extend it um. Yeah, I don't want to say more and end up being wrong, but I believe that the intent is for uh that to last for fifty years, provided the um that the council uh gives the extension of the mi- uh multifamily tax exemption. For the maximum amount of time under uh Washington. The um that can be provided.
Okay. And um. Good, no, that's uh, we will really have low-income houses if we do that, just for fifty years. So uh that's.
Just a one little thing is that even at that rate, uh that still actually puts us uh behind uh where we need to be with regard to. It helps, every little bit helps, don't get me wrong, but um it uh it would still uh be not keeping with pace with uh the uh requirements from Department of Commerce for affordable housing in the city.
Right. No, I know, I understand, but uh at least it wouldn't uh immediately be sold and turn into something higher. Um so I brought up about uh. The grizzly bears. Um uh it is, it is just a. Uh a comment. I mean, I go to North Bend and other places, and there's a lot of folks who are are wondering, um is this really a good idea? So um and the thought. It's gonna be far away. So i- if, you know, it'd just be nice to engage and say, what is the rationale? The final one, a little off the wall. But when we were doing the cop plan, the EDC. And the blind commission, we had a tongue-in-cheek thing that says, you know, this is the code, this is what we want. Unless we got In-N-Out Burger somewhere in the town. We all laughed and says, yeah, we'd make an exception for that. Well. Turns out that things have changed the last year um because of. The uh what the California has done with wages and other benefits, they've crossed a threshold. If the first time ever, In-N-Out is closing facilities in California, that's one. Two, the first time ever, In-N-Out is putting facilities in Washington State. Now, I don't have any contacts, but it'd be. Uh i- if we're really serious, if we're really serious, that wasn't just a, oh, we wish it. Um we could go find some folks to beat the bushes and see if we could find somebody to to really flesh that out. But 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 if we do that, if we do that. Um are we serious that we would want? An In-N-Out Burger somewhere in the city? Are we really sure we would want that? We could just take a lot of effort to to get there, and if you get there, you know, with, hey, they wanted to go do it, and then, you know, half the city doesn't like it, then.
Um, okay, I've actually looked into this on a personal sense, just because I was like, why did they pick this random town outside of Vancouver? Um but all In-N-Out have to be within a certain distance of each other due to like. Shin, like chain requirements and their like quality of freshness. So if that was a plausibility, they would. It would be a minute before it got within the realm of Snoqualmie, but uh also. It would come down to zoning, like would zoning allow a fast food restaurant, especially zoning? When you, when you have to consider a restaurant that would probably impact traffic that largely. Be like huge considerations, and they would probably go through a public process such as this one.
Who would have to want it? That's my question. How bad do we really want it? Because um.
Yeah, there there would be debate.
Yeah, I don't think the window is going to be um and and how long it would take to come that. But the worst thing could be is to make the attempt and then have the city go, you know what? I really don't want it. Anyway, so I'm just curious. Really, would we really entertain that?
I don't know that it would be good.
Yeah, that that would be. Open to the.
Yeah.
Well. And then, you know, like the only potentially good site I could see is right there by the the empty one by the hospital, right? But that would be terrible for the parkway. And and what we're trying to achieve with all that construction, so that wouldn't work.
I was thinking. High school, like uh not Herfie Burger, but somewhere around that area, and that way you're going to the. No matter where you do it, it would be. Uh it'd be a traffic uh thing. So so really, we were, we were just whipping our hand, really believing what we were talking. Sounds like.
It is a funny coincidence, but yeah, the zoning ultimately would also have to. Allow um a fast food restaurant and. I think that would be a pretty large discussion. If this is something that would actually come in. And so if the topic did arise. The debate would be open. People could definitely say their opinions.
Yeah, yeah, it would take so much effort, like you said, with the locations and whatnot, just to pull it off, but I don't even know if it's worth uh taking the shot at it.
Yeah, I I'd wonder if there are other cities where the threshold to entry would be significantly lower. And make them attractive potentially, like if there was some city nearby that had. A giant retail and fast food area right next to the freeway.
By, for example. What I would say is um just knowing how those businesses tend to move operationally as they come into a region. So what Ashley said is accurate for they have. Operational like logistics that they have to work through. So to accomplish that, they would open like ten. In Washington i- in in short order.
Yeah, yeah, no, it'd need to be, yeah, we'd need a sequin vault. I mean, yeah, for sure. Yeah. Okay. I was just curious how.
Interesting, though.
For the same reason you did.
Yeah, they called our bluff, huh?
Okay. Um that's all I had on that humorous note. Um thing else from uh planning. Okay, at this point, move on to upcoming schedule?
Alrighty, so I do want to note that I actually did have a label. Twentieth for the historic.
Okay.
Downtown intro, just because. The the EDC meeting will only be a few days before the. Meeting, and that may not allow proper time for us to. Actually get material together and ready for um. Planning Commission, but we. Do have the public process uh municipal code intro planned for that day instead um. So that's more of just. An introduction than anything. It's not gonna be nearly as substantive as like today was um. And then. I had a future date. Hopefully we'll get to it in early June. We're hoping to begin the climate change introduction. Um since. We are securing the grant funding for that. And the historic preservation will also get moved out since we didn't address that.
How much grant funding are we getting for the climate change? Is that just for the plan?
Uh it is gonna be rolled into a couple of different changes as well, like we'll be updating the critical areas at the same time and. Uh and then improvement as well. Uh so there's. Going to be a few different changes that are all climate change oriented that will be done at that time. And I can't remember the amount of the grant off the top of my head. Okay, that's what I thought, but I didn't want to say it. Um it's about five hundred thousand.
Okay. Okay.
And then. Here's also just a refresher for the work program items. So at the next meeting, this is what we're hoping to get started.
Okay. Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions with the commission? I think I think we're good. No raised hand?
So there seemed to be a lot of discussion today. If anyone has more clarifying questions. Or comments or anything, um. Feel free to email me. I tend to be a pretty good go-point to contact the whole planning commission, so I just would like to remind everyone of that.
Good, I appreciate that. I see uh Vice Chair Tesman?
I I really apologize. I didn't think of this during the commissioner uh items of interest thing, but I'm glad I remembered it. Um and and staff probably didn't have an answer on this, but I get uh email updates from Commerce. And I saw that there is um like there's capital funding grant program available for. Youth recreational. Facilities, and so I was just curious if if staff was aware of that, the city's aware of that, if they're looking at tapping into that, says it's. One point, up to one point two million. Um and so I'm curious if, for example, you know, the the Y expansion, you know, could could receive some of that money. Uh or maybe, you know, offset the cost of the splash pad, stuff like that, or the new basketball courts that will be needed. Um but just try to see if that's on the radar.
Uh that sounds like something that potentially. Uh Public Works would know about, but if you would like to share that with me, I can always pass it along.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. I'll I'll send an email.
Okay.
Thanks, sorry.
Fine. Anything else? Any commissioners? Staff, we're good? Okay, at this point, I move we adjourn the meeting at. What is it? Eight fifty-two PM? Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
David?
Hi.
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 Have you made?
Right?
Hi, everyone.
Hi, everybody.